Good afternoon, everyone. We might get underway. Could I just remind councillors to click to join meeting in resolve? So, welcome to the special meeting of Toowoomba Regional Council this afternoon. This meeting is open to the public and also will be livestreamed. I'd like to thank those of you who are in the room with us today and everyone watching via council's social media channels. I acknowledge the Aboriginal parties whose songlines traverse these lands we meet on today, the Western Waka Waka, Gaiabal and Jarrawa peoples, and pay respects to their elders, past, present and emerging, for they hold the knowledge-rich traditions and bold ambitions of Australia's first peoples. The... We have to record any apologies. We do have an apology from councillor Edwina Farquhar, and a resolution is required that the apology for not attendance from councillor Edwina Farquhar be accepted. If I can have so councillor to move that, the mayor, and councillor Bill Secunder, all those in favour? Carry on. There are no requests for leave of absence. There are no declarations of prescribed conflicts of interest. There is a declaration of declarable conflict of interest from the deputy mayor councillor Rebecca Von Hoff.
Thank you, Chair. I inform this meeting that I have a declarable conflict of interest in relation to item number five, infrastructure charges discount request thirteen and fifty-one Horrex Road, Ravensbourne, MCUI two thousand and nineteen three six eight five A, as defined in section one fifty E N of the Local Government Act two thousand and nine. The nature of my interest is as follows. This declarable conflict of interest arises because Emily Gunderson is listed as an involved party in attachment one of the report. Ms Gunderson and her husband's construction company, Valdal, undertook building works on a property I own. These works concluded in two thousand and twenty-three. I wish to participate in the decision in relation to this matter. I acknowledge that eligible councillors must now determine, pursuant to section one fifty E S of the Local Government Act two thousand and nine, whether I, one, may participate in the decision about the matter, including by voting on the matter; two, must leave the meeting, including any area set aside for the public, and stay away from the meeting while eligible councillors discuss and vote on the matter; or, three, may participate in the decision about the matter, subject to conditions.
Thank you. Any questions from councillors to... Yes, ma'am?
Thanks, Chair. Thanks councillor Rebecca. Just two if I could. You highlighted the timeframe of the bill. Just confirming that is complete and it's done?
That's correct.
And the second question is, there's no ongoing contractual relationship in regard to that or anything else?
No, nothing.
So, Chair, with that in mind, given this was the passage of time, this wasn't even thought of at that stage. There's no contractual arrangement. Job's completed, job's paid for, all done. I see no reason why the council couldn't stay and participate in the decision.
You'll say move. Any further questions to the deputy mayor, councillor Tim?
Thank you, Chair. Good afternoon councillor Von Hoff. Thanks for bringing this up. My only question is in the report agenda. It states that you requested a report considering a discount be prepared under section four point four of the two point oh nine acceptable request guidelines. When that was requested, was this contract happening?
Yeah, that's a good question. Councillor McMahon, no. So I believe I requested this in maybe January or February of this year. Thank you.
No further questions? The mayor will move that motion. Second for that, councillor Tim. All those in favour? Carry on. Thank you. We are now required to suspend standing orders and require a motion that in accordance with clause one point two of the best practice example, standing orders for local government and standing committee meetings, March two thousand and twenty-four. Standing orders be suspended for the period of consideration of item number four. Could I have the deputy mayor and seconded by councillor James in discussion? All those in favour? Carry. Thank you. To start the ball rolling, I'd call on... Might just introduce the officers of attendance. The interim CEO, of course, Kari Musgrove, our acting general manager, Matthew Coleman, acting manager planning, James Leader, who will do the presentation. And that might be it. I don't know if somebody is there. No, okay, okay, okay. Could I call on James Leader to deliver the presentation of officers? Thanks.
Thank you, Chair. Good afternoon councillors, executives, council staff, submitters, the applicant and guests today. I present a development application for reconfiguring a lot, being the subdivision of one into two lots located at twenty-one A Jellico Street, Mount Lofty. The eight hundred and sixty metres squared site is located within the low-density residential zone under the Toowoomba Regional Planning Scheme and contains... Do you want me to start from the beginning? The eight hundred and sixty metres squared site is located within the low-density residential zone under the Toowoomba Regional Planning Scheme and contains existing retaining walls and site works which benefit from all required approvals and permits as detailed within the application history section of the planning report in attachment two. The site is also located within the airport environs overlay of the planning scheme. Can I please refer to figure A of attachment four? The subject site is located within the existing residential suburb of Mount Lofty and is located approximately four hundred and thirty metres southeast of the Mount Lofty lookout and five hundred and seventy metres east of the Toowoomba State High School, as seen in figure A of attachment four. Can I please refer to figure E of attachment four now? Proposed development seeks to reconfigure the existing lot into two new lots of four hundred and thirty metres squared in area each, which is below the minimum lot size identified for the low-density residential zone. As such, the application is subject to impact assessment and required public notification. During public notification, council received sixteen properly made submissions objecting to the proposal. The issues raised by submitters broadly were the proposed development's conflict with the planning scheme for reduced lot sizes and frontages, the removal of street trees, stormwater drainage and sewage infrastructure, design outcomes of future residential development, earthworks and retaining walls, and increased traffic. The matters raised by submitters and their submissions have been considered in the assessment of the development application and a response to these matters raised by submitters is contained within the public notification section of the planning report in attachment two. For clarity, the proposed development is only for the reconfiguration of one lot into two lots. Existing site infrastructure and works that have been undertaken to date to facilitate the proposed subdivision already benefit from separate approvals and are not matters that can be considered as part of this application. Assessment of future residential development on this land as part of this application is limited to ensuring that future dwelling forms that are consistent with the intention of the low-density residential zone, such as detached dwelling houses, are able to be accommodated on each proposed lot, having regard to broad design criteria including setbacks, onsite car parking and vehicle access, and access to private open space. As such, the application must be assessed on its merits, having specific regard to the development being applied for, being the reconfiguration of one into two lots. Key assessment matters for the development application are summarised into three main issues, being the retention of existing street trees, the reduced sizes and frontages of the proposed lots, and the design outcomes of future residential development on the site. These have been addressed within the planning report in attachment two. While the detailed determination of future design outcomes of residential development on the proposed lots cannot be considered as part of this application, the matter has been addressed nonetheless in order to provide clarity and reassurance to interested parties during the decision-making process. The proposed lot sizes, while not meeting the minimum lot size for the low-density residential zone, meet the intent of the low-density residential zone and performance outcomes of the reconfiguring a lot code by providing lots that have sufficient dimension and size to accommodate future residential development. In regards to the existing oak street tree at the frontage of proposed lot thirteen, a risk-based approach was taken, with the only works seen likely to cause potential impact on the street tree being the construction of future driveway crossovers. As such, condition twenty-six has been proposed to require the construction of future driveways to be located as close as possible to the western boundary of proposed lot thirteen in order to maximise protection of and separation from the street tree. Further conditions have been imposed which require a future operational works application to be submitted for any driveway crossovers, which will be assessed against the requirement of council's planning scheme, as well as Australian Standard forty-nine seventy two thousand and nine, which provides requirements for the location of driveways to be clear of street trees in order to maximise their protection. Any future driveway crossovers to lots thirteen and fourteen, subject to operational works approval, will be required to be constructed prior to the ceiling of the plan of survey. While council officers have delegation to decide the development application, it was considered appropriate to bring this application to council for consideration, given sixteen properly made submissions were received during the public notification period objecting to the proposed development. Proposal has been assessed against all relevant assessment provisions, including the applicable codes in the planning scheme, and complies or can be conditioned to comply with all relevant assessment benchmarks as identified within the planning report. Therefore, the application is recommended for approval, subject to the recommended reasonable and relevant conditions within attachment three. Thank you and happy to take any questions.
Either now or after. Councillor Tim?
Thanks, Chair. I thought there'd be a line up. Do have several questions. If I could please take the officers to attachment four, page eight, so we're talking figure F here. Thanks. So the first question... And it is a genuine question. We're here today to discuss one block into two. My viewing of that picture there is it's already two blocks. So can you explain to me how we got to this point where to my... And I don't know when that photo was taken, but I can clearly see dividing fence down the middle. We're arguing, considering that today and it's already done, can you explain that process?
Through the chair. So the site currently is one single site, being eight hundred and sixty metres squared. The works that have been undertaken on the site so far, including retaining walls and site works, feature all the relevant approvals. It is somewhat unusual that those works have occurred before the subdivision, but it's not against anything in the planning scheme or the planning act.
A fence right down the middle of a... Thanks. I appreciate your answer. While we're on that one, I did want to talk about driveways. The left-hand block, I can see where you'd fit it to the left of the first tree, but because there's a retaining wall for most of the right-hand block, looking at the picture, where are we proposing the driveway goes? Should this be approved?
Through the chair. So the driveway for proposed lot thirteen, the left side block, as seen in figure F, would be between this existing street tree and the boundary. There's a separation of approximately eight or so more metres and the requirements for driveway standards would be that there's at least a three or four metre separation from that tree and any edge of proposed driveway on that side of the site.
It's a left-hand side one?
The left-hand side.
So I'm asking the right side?
Oh, sorry, the right side. Yeah. I might refer to it as the high and the low side, as Karen indicated. It's probably easier, sorry.
Left and right. So right-hand side with the retaining wall there?
Yeah, on the right hand side.
Just after the info on the driveway for that site, please.
Oh, sorry. So yeah, on the right-hand side, proposed lot fourteen, the driveway will be anywhere along the site. The most ideal location for the proposed driveway would be between where the retaining wall ends and the property boundary starts, which is, I guess, where that for sale sign is. Anywhere along there could be where the driveway could be located, but it could also be at the right-hand boundary of the site as well. That retaining wall doesn't limit the opportunity for a driveway to be constructed across that site.
Oh, right. I see. You can pull it out?
Yeah.
Can I... Right. Just processing this. I'm looking at that and my logical... If you're going to put a driveway, you'd put it between the tree and the retaining wall. I know that's... I don't have to do anything. That would be my reading. Does the driveway fit in that area there?
Are you referring to the street tree on proposed lot thirteen?
On the right-hand side block, the street tree?
So that tree there is not an existing street tree. It's on private property, the coral tree on that right-hand side block to the right of the for sale sign. It's not a street tree, that one. The street tree is the tree on the left.
So they can just remove that and put the driveway in?
It's on private property, that coral tree on the right-hand side of proposed lot fourteen.
So, thank you for that. If you could just scroll down one page. That was my next question. So this figure G is talking about the first street tree, but the other one is not in this map and therefore not a council street tree?
No. So the current tree that's on that proposed lot fourteen is a coral tree within private property. It's not a council-controlled street tree. This tree in figure G is a council-controlled street tree. The alignment's messed up a little bit, sorry. It should be between those two posts. The line's a bit off-centre with how the report's been finalised. There are conditions in place, though, to require an additional street tree at the frontage of proposed lot fourteen.
Right. I have many more questions, but I might let my colleagues ask some. Thank you.
Councillor Trevor?
Thanks, Chair. Glad you clarified the tree situation. My question is, if this was approved, with the block size being approved there, what size dwelling could be put on to that, giving appropriate space around the home? Like, we don't want a unit there or anything. It's a single unit dwelling, which a single house dwelling, I would probably say, would be better. What size or maximum size can that be compared to the block size?
Through the chair. Thank you councillor. There are a number of requirements for any future dwellings on the site, as well as dual occupancies or multiple dwellings. Both multiple dwellings, dual occupancies and dwelling houses will all require some form of assessment by council, if constructed or proposed. Dwelling houses have a number of requirements, the first being the small lot housing design code, which is a requirement under the planning scheme for the design, siting and amenity of any future dwelling house on the site, given that the site's less than four hundred and fifty metres squared. And the second is the QDC requirements for sitting on lots such as these. So the small lot housing design code incorporates setbacks and siting requirements of the QDC and will ensure that any future dwelling house meets those setbacks and requirements while still providing a house on the site.
Yeah, you sort of answered it, but didn't, as in square meterage. So square meterage could mean you could build a double-level home there, two-storey home?
Yeah, that's within the requirements of the code.
Any further questions? Just... I did have a question about that small lot design code, but I think you have answered that. Just wondering, what's the position with infrastructure charges? There would have been infrastructure charges with respect to that current allotment originally. Will there be additional charges if it's divided to two or would they remain the same?
Thank you, Mr Chair. There is a credit for one dwelling house on the land, which is normal for residential lots. By subdividing it into two, additional infrastructure charges will be payable for a three-bedroom house.
Thank you. I'd like to call on the submitter, Archim Honay, to come... Oh, sorry. Councillor Bill, please.
Yeah, thanks, Chair. It's a genuine question to maybe carry or whoever. What are we actually considering here today? We have an officer's recommendation. And then further down on page four, under delegation. The officers have that allegation to decide the development application, however, that's the reason why it's been brought here, material change use, impact. Accordingly, it is considered appropriate that council consider the development application. I'm just wondering if there's a recommendation. We seem to have strayed away from a former agreement or position that council took, that if these come to this forum, that it is for council consideration. But I'm just wondering, there is a recommendation and that's for the next one as well?
Thanks. I think it might have something to do with the number of submitters.
No, no, that's not my question. My question is more about, and Carrie, you'll recall the conversation with Wendy Evans and councillors, because it puts us in the unenviable position that if we want to go against an officer's recommendation, we have to come up with reasons as non-planning professionals as to why we would go against an officer's recommendation. I thought... So that's... I'm genuinely asking, what are we actually considering here?
Thank you councillor Carl. I believe you're referring to some advice that... Or it was probably more a discussion that we all had with some legal counsel about ways that council could consider matters that were brought to them. And there was some discussion about whether officers should be providing a recommendation or whether we should be putting words to the effect of that council considers the following. To my understanding, we never reached any sort of conclusion or recommendation about how that was going to proceed in future. So in the absence of any clear direction, we are continuing to do what has been done in the past, which is to provide an officer recommendation with conditions. I hope that answers the question.
Not really. That's background conversation. It still doesn't... There's a recommendation here. It's really not for our consideration. It's...
Thanks for your... Thanks for your views. The next item is, unless there are any further questions? The next item is to hear from the presenter.
I have to agree with councillor Bill. It's come to us for our consideration, but it's been recommended for approval. And I do agree that it... It really doesn't give us too many options when that happens. So I do agree with councillor Bill. Perhaps it's a discussion for another day. But my understanding of that discussion was that we were going to go forward in a different manner.
I think in the absence of any motion that councillors might want to move, then I propose to continue on as planned. Any further questions? Okay. Could I call upon the submitter, Archim Honay, to come forward over here? Thanks, Archim. We normally... We normally restrict these to about five minutes, if you could.
I try to be short, but it's a pretty complicated thing and it might be a little bit longer, not half an hour, clearly. Dear councillors, dear Mayor MacDonald, dear council officers, dear community members, thank you for letting me speak to you in this setting. My name is Achim Hone. Together with our children, my wife, Mai and I have lived in Mount Lofty for the past seven years. We live in twenty-one Jellicoe Street. When we read about the plan of subdivision for twenty-one A, we considered what this might mean for us. We were approached by neighbours about it and discussed the circumstances. In the end, Mai and I made our submission as part of this process, objecting to the plans. Some of our neighbours submitted their own letters, others supported us and ours. Considering that there are four additional parties that supported us, who are listed in our submissions, have not submitted their own, there are at least twenty parties who objected. The mere fact that council received sixteen valid submissions speaks the language on its own. One imagined the people who had a view and weren't able to submit. On sixth February, the document status under developmentee was that the old oak tree was to be felled and part of the application. We therefore welcome the new fact that this tree is now considered a community tree and we'd like to call it, as we'd like to call it, council-controlled and protected against damage by any future development. Many thanks to council for that. I'm unfamiliar with this setting, as you experience, format and process. I just assume that everybody is prepared, as prepared as they can be, having read through the detail of most documentation available to them online in developmentee or from public domain sources. I will therefore not replicate what I wrote before within my submission in my email to you last night. And I shall presume you read my points there and are considering them. The planning reports start with the corporate plan reference, preserve, protect and improve our environments. I believe this is a fabulous motto, which is related to what we're here today for. The planning report provides a bit of history with regards to this lot over the past four years. Fair to say that not everything with this property has gone a direct route, including applications submitted and withdrawn nine months later. I also noted that one approval was awarded after the fact, which I thought interesting. I am also mindful that holding the site for four-plus years during high-interest times and submitting withdrawing applications must put financial pressure on this developer. Of course, those are business decisions which only the developer itself is responsible for and the community cannot support the developer, ensuring they get two lots instead of one. Pre-launch meetings before this application was made hopefully have not promised any outcome. But let me cut to the chase. Firstly, the current town plan relevant for this land provides a minimum lot size and a minimum frontage, as it has defined it for, and it has defined it for a reason. I think it is to protect what needs protecting and to achieve something that is acceptable. And so that everybody knows the rule. So that we all have a clear line on what to expect when we buy property or decide to live in Mount Lofty. Now, I'm not a planner, I'm just a simple consulting engineer. And when I read the planning report, I get confused between performance outcome and acceptable outcome and so on. What I thought was the rule, the town plan, that gets watered down in the planning report. The planning report then says something like, but four hundred and thirty is not far from five hundred square metres and fourteen metres is almost fifteen metres. And she'll be right, because we have small lot design code. There will not be any impact on amenity and character. I back to differ. Whilst the planning reports make us believe that everything will be fine, I have not found any demonstration by the proponent that a future home could even comply with the constraints given. What grounds, therefore, does the assessor have to conclude that? Trying to draw up precedence, the planning report lists five, in the assessor's eyes, relevant properties below five hundred square metres. I considered them and found that all of those do comply with the frontage requirement of the town plan. And none of them is in steep terrain. Therefore, from a logical point of view, the list is invalid as precedence. But if you were to consider five out of five hundred houses in Mount Lofty, say, in the area to prove consistency with current residential form, as the planning plan says, any maths teacher would consider your proof inadequate and highly flawed.
You have about one more minute.
I'm sorry, I need a bit more. I'm very sorry, but this is a complex issue. I know at times we have to be open to make exceptions, for instance, when particular circumstances allow this. For instance, if we have, if we want to protect or prevent something that is already protected. On the other hand, if the particular circumstances are exceptionally difficult, already when possibly, where possibly that old rule is already stretched to properly protect what needs protecting and where the performance of that rule is already jeopardised, then we must not make exceptions, as we would stretch the outcome beyond what is actually wanted to achieve and possibly near breaking point. Now, that's a bit rhetoric, theoretic. Our site is in steep terrain of sixteen per cent. I see that on the huffing and puffing of the joggers that typically stop jogging and start walking up a bit, thanks to all the retaining walls around and cross twenty-one A. When you stand at the north-eastern edge, now two to five metres higher than the neighbouring property levels, you see every point of that property, the garden, the pool, the deck and the living room windows. Privacy is gone, so the fence has been put up to prevent peeping tom and protect. I refer you to figure two in yesterday's email. What protects privacy further would be setbacks. I fear the small lot design code written for tight spaces with small houses will be unable to protect what needs protecting in the Mount Lofty way and to Mount Lofty levels. Creating two narrow four thirty square metre lots in this location is bound to trigger planning outcomes that are below what we want to see in Mount Lofty. I fear that setbacks will be shorter. The land for greenery and gardens around the house will not be worth mentioning, as you need any space for the house, you can get for the house. Double-story building will be the pre-programmed ultimate outcome. The second story will be a viewing platform for the surrounds and neighbouring properties. The streetscape will be, will move from open currently to blocked by a building front across the entire lot of, frontage of twenty-one A.
I have to ask you to conclude, but you may be able to add further aspects to your presentation and answering questions that might be asked of you now. Any questions from councillors? Councillor Carroll?
Thank you, Mr Chair. To Mr Hone, you made a comment that approval was given for something prior to the application. Could you explain that to me, please?
There was some reference to earthworks, which was only given in twenty-four. I think the planners would be able to give us more information. I think it was the earthworks for the retaining wall. The retaining wall was built, the earthworks were done, and they didn't consider that earthworks had to get an approval. Is that correct? I don't know how this works, but you can...
I have a comment on that, thank you. Does it mean it was done without approval and then came afterwards? Or could I have an answer to that, please?
Through the chair, thank you. I believe he's referring to a retrospective operational works approval for earthworks that was approved. Just trying to find it here, thirtieth of October twenty twenty-four. This was a retrospective approval, so it was done after the fact. There was a history of compliance on the site regarding the earthworks and the building approval, including some interpretation of ancillary earthworks to building works for the retaining wall. And that concluded with the application for earthworks that was approved on the thirtieth of October last year.
Deputy Ben?
Thank you Chair, through you. Thank you Achim for your presentation and your correspondence as well. Just to comment first, you talk about performance outcomes and acceptable outcomes, and I don't think that there's a single councillor around this table that doesn't feel a similar way in some instances. So this is what we, this is what we have to work within. You talked about the steepness of the slope and what that leads to. And I actually went past the site yesterday afternoon to just sort of lay eyes on it and what, it is steep. And, and you talk about that we are here today considering the splitting of this block, but what naturally carries after that is the construction of homes on those lots. And your concern is there will be, your property in particular, being on that eastern side, will be impacted by a lack of privacy, which holds because of the height of the slope. And, and I just, my question actually is not to you, it is to our planners, James maybe. Can you please comment or answer the question about what, what connection we can put with the matter before us at the moment, which is just dividing up the block? And what will obviously be a continuation of that, which is the erection of a home? And the lack of privacy that may follow as a result of that?
Through the chair. This application is purely for the reconfiguring of one to two lots. The only thing we can assess about any future development is whether a dwelling house within, within the intent of the low-density residential zone can fit on the site and if the site is suitable enough to be able to support a dwelling house, which in this case it is. The privacy of any future dwelling or any future neighbours is something that would have to be as part of a future application. I make reference to it in my report, but the small lot housing design code is the code and the mechanisms that we have currently under our scheme to assess development on smaller blocks to ensure that privacy, amenities, setbacks and all design outcomes of future dwellings will be assessed and an acceptable outcome provided for any future dwelling house.
So, so thank you, I think...
General Manager?
Thank you Chair. Just to carry on from what James said, under the current provisions, without a subdivision, a two-story house could be built there, one point five metres from the side boundary for the first level, two metres off the side boundary for the second level. The same sorts of provisions apply, whether it's a small lot or the existing lot. This small lot code actually gives some additional protection because it does allow the council to assess and regulate some of the things that are not normally assessed with a dwelling house. As I think you all know, you can just lodge a building application for a dwelling house, you don't need to go through a planning application. So the small lot code at least provides council with an additional tool to address things like privacy, setbacks and those sorts of things, whereas a normal house on a normal lot doesn't have that rigor.
Councillor Gardner?
Can I say, if the block wasn't divided in two and you did a cut-the-fill as you would normally on a site, the, the actual platform would be higher, you'd have a bigger problem. So by cutting it in half doesn't necessarily... I mean, look at this, retainables, say it's a metre, you'd probably be another half metre higher on that bottom side, which would make the people viewing into the house works. If they didn't subdivide the site and did a cut-the-fill to fill the house on an eight-hundred-square-metre lot, which you can do, which you would do.
Thank you for your comment. Any further questions from councillor? Councillor Trevor?
Thank you. To the objector with the double-story height, as Carrie mentioned, if that was an eight-hundred-and-something square metre block, somebody wanted to put a big mega mansion on there, you'd go up two stories to attack the view. So it would still be the same situation if it's a single lot dwelling there anyway. It's going to impede, it's going to overlook your property and into your property, which happens quite often around town anyway. Yep. Yeah, you can respond.
They put one house on it, they would position it not so close to the edges. Why would you? You would use the area much smarter. So, and therefore would be a larger setback, a larger effective setback available.
Yeah.
I think in this case, if we've got a small lot, there is just no flexibility, there's no way, and there will be, will be, you know, they will minimise the setback as they can and build two stories high, as you would, but then we have that problem. And I just don't see a solution for that, quite frankly. And it doesn't give me much comfort that we are in leafy Mount Lofty, are using in a low-density residential area, want to use small lot design codes, which are probably written, and I'm, again, I'm not an expert on that, but are probably written to allow densely populated areas to happen. So probably less onerous than we currently have.
Thank you.
General Manager?
Thank you for voicing your concerns and thanks for coming along. I know it's, it can be quite intimidating in a council chamber. I just wanted to provide a little bit of information for the benefit of everyone. Councillor Mantifol, you asked before about what size house could be built on this lot, and I'm sorry, we weren't able to provide the answer immediately. The small lot code has a provision that limits site coverage to fifty per cent on subsequent development. So the lots are four hundred and thirty as proposed, so fifty per cent of that would be a ground floor area of two hundred and fifteen, sorry, maths is not my thing. And if they went double-story, then it would be about double that. So on a four hundred and thirty square metres, if they went to a two-story design, we would expect a gross floor area of four hundred, four twenty, four thirty, something like that.
But you'd still have fifty per cent grass technically, or open space around the property?
Non-building, yes.
Non-building, okay.
Sorry, Councillor Tim?
Yeah, thank you Chair. It was a question for the submitter, but perhaps better suited to the officers anyway. So that oak tree that's on there, that the one that's on private property, if this remained as one block, we didn't subdivide it into, we kept it one block, could the owner have said one block bulldoze that tree on their property at any time?
Yes, that tree is not protected in any way.
Okay, thank you. So, appreciate your answer.
Okay. Councillor Bill?
I just, I've driven past this lot very frequently and it's, earthworks have been happening over a long period of time on this lot. I just, the photo that councillor Tim was looking at before is the fall to the street. The reason why I'm asking is, does it meet QDAM requirements around, into, cross, crossfall and then therefore drainage to the street? How is that treated around stormwater? The top block would be, you'd be literally pushing it uphill by the look of that?
Jan?
Water, that is.
No, thank you councillor Carl. Deanne, would you mind scrolling up a couple of pages? There's a plan that's got some contours on it. That, oh, sorry, that one. Oh, no. Sorry, my mistake. We don't have any contour information available at the moment. Perhaps we could come back to you on that, councillor Carl, I'll check online. Oh, sorry, we have one of our learned engineers in the room and he can speak to that. Thank you.
Chair, so the earthworks are relatively flat for both pads. The intent is, I should probably back it up, so the block existing used to fall east slightly northeast, so away from the road. So by, with the earthworks creation of the pads and then the addition of allowing for stormwater infrastructure from the roof connecting into pipes that will be built, crossover pipes that will be built through the verge, you should see the majority of surface area will actually be collected and discharged to the street, where it used to sheet-fall across those adjoining properties.
No, thanks, thanks for that. If you guys are confident that that'll be handled to the street, because you can imagine that most of this site will end up impervious anyway, on a small lot.
So there's provisions for the stormwater infrastructure to get the roof water and some of the driveway to the street, but the ultimate outcome will be reliant on a few... But the ultimate outcome will be reliant on future builders to connect to the infrastructure that's provided. You will still get some area, some of the driveway may not reach the road just because of the existing heights. You will still get the backyard, some of the grass area will still sheet flow across the property boundary. But the majority of water and most of the impervious area should go all to the street. If they use the infrastructure, that'll be provided.
So does it meet QDAM requirements with these pads cut? You know, crossfall on the block?
Yes, yeah. So QDAM requires, there's varying levels in QDAM. You can either can get it to inter allotment or to street drainage. In this instance, the design relies on getting the impervious area such as the roof to the street.
Further questions at this stage? Mayor?
Thanks Chair. Is the applicant speaking today as well? Okay. Okay, that's fine. That's okay. Prior to that, through to James, through to you Chair, through Carrie, through to Matt, through to James. Firstly, Akeem, thank you very, thanks very much for representing your community in such, such a fashion. The, the items that the submitters have had concerns around, which are reported, street tree retention, lot size frontage, future residential development considerations. In, in regard to those, and I note that we do have a slightly amended condition for particularly on the street tree retention. Before the applicant comes forward, I see some value in actually putting that forward up on the screen. And councillor Rebecca will probably want to talk to that. So while that's, while that's happening, I just wanted further commentary in regard to, to those elements, in particular the ones that we're dealing with today, which is one lot into two. Okay, not, not the design of the house and small lot. And that, that should give comfort to our community who some will be hearing it for the very first time that we have a small lot code. And that's an important part of the discussion today because our region is set to see more of that. We have to see more of it because of the density of housing that is required. And it will go across all areas of our CBD, including east Toowoomba, north Toowoomba, south Toowoomba, west Toowoomba. It will be scattered across everywhere. That is going to happen. So the, the emphasis on the small lot housing code is an important one and it will have an extra scrutiny around exactly what the submitter was saying around privacy setbacks, street scape. So that's, that will be dealt with in that area. In regard to the street frontage, the 14.25 metres and the, the suggestion that, you know, others meet that requirement. The assessment suggests that it does, is an acceptable outcome. Can you just explain how that, that is derived? So that's the first question. And the second question is in regard to the impacts potentially on traffic for a building, for building. So this is about the lot subdivision, right? The building, the traffic and what have you would be dealt with in operational works, I would assume, if there's another occasion. Can you just touch on those two things for us?
Through the chair. I guess the first thing in terms of lot size and lot frontages, as, as you've pointed out, it is an acceptable outcome. And as we operate in a performance based planning scheme system here in Queensland, the acceptable outcome that we're talking about is the reconfiguration of a lot code. Within that code, acceptable outcome 4.1 states that all lots are rectangular and have minimum width to depth ratios, areas, dimensions, frontages as prescribed in table 9.4.5.4. That table provides the sizes and dimensions as a minimum requirement for lots within the low density residential zone. However, we're not being able to comply or we're not complying with acceptable outcome. The level of assessment then takes it up to the performance outcome, which in this case is performance outcome four, which is that all new lots provide sufficient area, frontage and dimensions and road access that enable their future development to achieve relevant outcomes in applicable use, zone overlay and other development codes in relation to dwellings, buildings and/or other structures, setbacks, landscaping, onsite parking, recreation areas, cultural heritage and character, street scape values and other design criteria. So in this instance, the acceptable outcome is that the lot has to be 500 metres squared and a frontage of 15. However, with this lot, it was unable to meet that, so it was assessed against the performance outcome. In this case, it was assessed and determined that a future dwelling or residential development can occur on the site with setbacks, amenity and outcomes that are able to be achieved for future residential dwelling, which is, I guess, helped along by that small lot housing design code, which sets out further requirements for any future development on the site.
Thank you. Very, very good information as to how it triggers that performance outcome, an extra level of criteria that wouldn't have had, had it just snuck in to where it was. So there's actually extra scrutiny over this. The second one in regard to the op, just a clarification around, you know, when the buildings, if they get done and the impact on traffic flow in that area, is that, that's not something that's spoken about here, it's spoken about at the op works phase?
So through the chair. For this application, we're only considering the impacts and effects of the one into two lot subdivision. Any future building works or any future design outcomes of anything on the site besides the one into two lot subdivision is something we can't consider as part of this. So the effect of any future traffic impacts of construction of, say if they built, built a dwelling on one of the lots, we can't consider that as part of this application.
Thank you James. I just wanted to clarify. So Chair, perhaps councillor Rebecca might touch on a couple of things.
Just in relation to the members, to the, proposed amendments to the tree conditions, if you could address those please, Deputy Mayor.
Yeah, thank you Chair. So the first is just to say, we talk about street trees. And I think it's, it's important to note that street trees belong to council and therefore belong to all residents in Toowoomba Regional Council. And there was, the report talks about that the, initially, the tree, the established oak tree at the front of proposed lot 13 wasn't going to be retained. And then that in the conditions that came to us, it was going to be contained. But reading through those conditions, there was a few things lacking basically because while we say that they, it, it had been conditioned to maintain and protect that tree, it wasn't, it basically didn't go far enough to say, well, what happens if something were to accidentally happen to that tree? Now, last year, council endorsed and now we have this policy 7.22, the tree removal and loss of amenity valuation procedure. And I talked with the planning department about that oak tree and, you know, do we put a bond on it? What do we do to ensure the protection? Because that is the will of the conditions, but how do we actually ensure that? And what is there in highlighted before us is a change to some of the conditions. And it basically just strengthens the existing conditions to make sure, first of all, that it is crystal clear that, that oak tree is to be protected. And it also says, if something happens to that oak tree, then there is going to be a value attached to that. And it is a significant value as spelt out in this council policy. And the idea of that is basically to be doubly sure that the tree that is important to the neighbourhood and is protected under the existing conditions is going to be there into the future. So there's several changes there Chair, that were circulated with councillors prior to this, prior to this meeting. And I appreciate that the applicant, actually this is your first time seeing this, but we're, we're working on condensed timelines here, so I apologise for that. I can assure you that it is in keeping with what was proposed. It is a strengthening of those provisions though. And it is also in keeping with the existing council policy that there is a valuation attached to the street trees which belong to all residents. So I suppose if there's questions from councillor's chair, we do have our arborist Tim here, which, who I'm grateful, thank you very much for being here Tim. But I'm also happy to take any questions if councillors have them in regards to the, the change in conditions that are there in yellow.
Well, is there any questions to the deputy mayor in relation to those changes? Councillor Melissa?
Thank you. Thank you Chair. My microphone's very loud. Thank you for that information Deputy Mayor. Probably, I don't know if my question would go to you or Tim or somebody. So, so can I, can we just scroll back to where that, where you just were? Yes. So there it says in number 30, that if any council control identified protection and retention requires removal, requires removal dies or suffers significant dieback due to this development within five years of the plan of survey being sealed or before the completion of the certificate of classification for any future dwelling house construction, it must be replaced at no cost to council with one of the following options. So in saying that, how do we monitor that? How do we ensure that that actually happens?
Thank you for the question. I'm fairly certain, given the interest in this room, that council will be notified as soon as something happens to that tree. There are various steps in this process too that trigger a council officer to check the compliance with conditions. So, so number one, sealing of a survey plan. Before a survey plan can get sealed, all the conditions associated with the approval have, have to be met first. So that would include any conditions and evidence showing that the tree, as it exists now, it continues to exist at the time of plan sealing. The second clause there about the certificate of completion, likewise, that is a process. So potentially there's a couple of times when the tree on a council footpath could be damaged. One is when they're building driveways or constructing the lots, building fences, that sort of thing. The second opportunity is when they might have a crane on site and they're swinging some roof trusses over and might accidentally clip the tree. Or, so, so those two options are there to make sure that at both of those times, there is an opportunity for council to have a way of checking that the tree hasn't been damaged before final approvals or, or certificates are provided.
Questions at this stage? Last, the representative of the applicant, James Williams from Precinct, they've been planning to come forward. Thanks James.
Sorry, through you Chair, there's one more change of those alternate conditions that I just draw your attention to before you speak as applicant. So that's the last of the changes, just so you're aware of them and able to respond.
Through you Chair, I, I might just explain this change to condition 59. This requires that the access driveway for both future lots be constructed before the survey plan is sealed. This is not a normal occurrence. Normally there is an operational works application and then the driveway is done later. But this is to bring forward the construction of those driveways before plan sealing occurs. And again, it's just a way to make sure that the opportunity is there for council to check on the health, health of the tree before plan sealing occurs. That makes sense.
Yeah, thanks James. Carol?
I'm sorry, I'm just a bit slow, just reading 50, I can't really see that, 59.1. Driveways and crossovers must be located as far as possible from the base of the existing oak tree at the frontage of the proposed lot 13 in order to maximise the long-term health and vitality of the street tree. How do we assess as far as possible? I mean, really that could be, they could say, no, well, I couldn't possibly do that because of X, X and X. So how do we, how do we police that?
General Manager?
Thank you Mr Chair. You'll see there's a couple of things there councillor Taylor. So we've restricted the width to three metres, which is to make sure it's wide enough for a single vehicle but not overly wide. And as far as possible is, we would take the common sense approach to that. There, there would be, I would assume after this, a, a plan proposed showing where that driver would be. It would need to have operational works approval. That would come through planning and through engineering for assessment. And we would determine how that would affect the tree. The tree has a canopy, it has a root ball. And generally the root ball lines up with the edge of the canopy more or less. So it's a reasonably easy determination on whether or not the tree will be impacted. And of course, our colleagues in parks and our arborist would be involved in that process.
Thank you. It's just as far as possible, I, I guess it would have been. And, and you'll pick it up that way, but it's a little bit hazy. We're all aware of what the trees are in Toowoomba, I think, with the canopy and the root ball. But, you know, I guess it'd be nice to see them on both sides, edges.
Thank you. James, if you could proceed, thank you.
Through you councillor Shine, and thank you Mayor and councillors. I think James did a very good job before of describing the development and answering your questions. So I just thought I'd expand on some of those answers to keep time short. So the main one is obviously the minimum lot size. And as, as Mayor McDonald pointed out earlier, we're going to see more and more of this throughout the region as council and the state government both look to encourage more infill development now. In considering lots less than the minimum lot size, that obviously trigger impact assessment. Now, under the planning scheme where impact assessment is applied for the minimum lot sizes, the strategic framework overrides any requirements under the development codes or the zone codes where there's any inconsistencies. Now, in, in respect of this, the strategic framework actually identifies a minimum density requirement of 30 to 40 dwellings per, dwellings per hectare for any infill development within the region. So this works out to be lot sizes of about 250 to 300 square metres. So the proposed lot far exceeds this. And we believe it is better in keeping with the community expectations in this area by providing the 430 square metre lots as opposed to going down to the smaller lot sizes actually envisaged in the strategic framework. With regards to the trees for the site, so the applicant originally proposed to remove the existing street tree and replace it with two new street trees. Following the consultation with the, the public and discussions with council, the applicant has, is agreeable to retaining that street tree on the basis that there's the separation distances to the driveway and any construction works. And then there is also a condition in there as well to provide a second street tree along that frontage, noting that there, there will need to be the removal of that existing tree within this, within the site. With regards to the, the retaining walls, so councillor McMahon, you mentioned before about the fence being down the middle. So that's actually just a retaining wall of about one metre in, in height. So there's no actual fence there. The, the works were originally done to facilitate a potential dual occupancy development based on some, some other matters outside of what we're considering here. The applicant had decided not to proceed down that basis. And in the years since has decided that he would like to proceed down the subdivision route as we're here today to discuss. So I just wanted to confirm that it, it wasn't a fence, it's all done there. And with, with respect to the retrospective approvals that was, was asked about earlier. So this was, this was more of a misunderstanding. So the applicant had applied to council for, for the retaining walls around, around the site. It was assumed as part of this application that this included, well, the reasons for the retaining wall was to level the site. So it was assumed during that application that the approval was also for levelling the site. Upon council issuing a, issuing a notice to the applicant notifying that this was not the case, the applicant proceeded down the correct routes to obtain the required approvals. So all these lots have been designed, they're relatively level, they actually slope towards the southeast of the site, which is towards the Jellicoe Street frontage. And there's also stormwater infrastructure at the bottom of the retaining wall as well to collect any additional stormwater to direct it straight to the, to the curb. And there was, this infrastructure was. And there was, um, this infrastructure was also, um, considered and approved by council, um, as well. Um, with regards to the, the built form, um, so as part of the application, we provided council with, uh, building plans. Um, so these were indicative only and weren't to be, to be considered. Um, but what these plans showed was they showed a, essentially that a single storey dwelling could be built on the site that complied with all the requirements that it needed to. So this, this dwelling was approximately, um, two hundred and, two hundred and thirty square metres, um, in size. And these, these demonstrated that a single house could be located on the lots. Um, obviously, the, the zone code allows to go up to two stories, so this would, um, allow them to go up to two stories while reducing the overall footprint of the site as, as well. Um. Yeah, I think that answers everything, yeah.
No, thanks, so James, any comments, councillor Bill?
Yeah, a couple of questions if I may, James. Um, is the strategic framework and strategic intent the same or different of the planning scheme? Um, maybe to you Carrie?
Uh, thank you. The strategic framework is an overarching document that, uh, where there is a conflict in other parts of the planning scheme, which sometimes does arrive, uh, we do go to the strategic framework to try and understand the overall purpose of the various different zones. So, um, James has probably used the words intent and framework interchangeably. Uh, I believe he's referring to one and the same document.
So isn't that non-legislative? The fr- the intent framework, the component of the?
It, it is part of the planning scheme and for an impact assessable application, we move outside of assessment of just the codes, which we would normally do for a code assessable application, and we are required to assess the application against the whole of the planning scheme, which does include the strategic framework.
Yeah, so I was, unless I heard wrong, I, from this room, went working through planning schemes, I was informed that the strategic intent is a non-legislative component of the planning scheme. When we were working through the planning scheme sessions.
It doesn't include acceptable measures and, and performance-based, uh, elements that we can assess it against, but it nevertheless is part of the planning scheme and it sets the overall umbrella under which the whole of the planning scheme sits. So what is in our strategic framework is absolutely something that we do need to consider when we're assessing impact assessable applications.
Okay. So it, it does override. Yeah, thank you. Just wanted to be clear on that because I, I heard my, I think I probably took some notes on it I could refer to, um, about it being a non-legislative component of the planning scheme therefore, that's why I was asking my question around the, how much teeth does that have in consideration? Anyway, no, thank you.
Uh, deputy mayor?
Thanks Chair, through you, thank you James for, um, your presentation for being here. Um, I apologize that you haven't had a chance to look at those strength and conditions in regards to the trees because, um, as a courtesy, I, I would have liked to have been able to do that, but just we're working on a really tight timeframe with the turnaround. So Dan, would you mind just getting, um, the amended conditions up? And I suppose, um, this is the first time that you're seeing them, but, um, I, the question, I suppose, is that, is it, is it crystal clear, um, through those conditions that it, it is, um, nothing's to happen to that tree as part of this, as part of, um, the conditions of this report? And I, and I'm also pleased that the environment and community services, um, folks are here because this is one of those instances, compliance sits with environment and community services, so we, we need the two to work together and to understand that there's a lot of eyes on this.
James?
Uh, yeah, through you Chair. Um, uh, just to touch on, um, Bill's comments before, so that section, um, is section one point two, under the planning scheme two, where it refers to the inconsistencies between the strategic framework and the zone. Um, and in response to your questions there Rebecca, um, from the, from the quick look, I think, um, I, I obviously haven't reviewed procedure seven point two-two there, um, but I see my, um, I think the thing we've got to remember, um, to consider is that the conditions all have to be very reasonable and relevant. I think most of these conditions are fairly reasonable. Um, there is probably some repetition in, in some of them. Um, in terms of the, uh, condition fifty, fifty-nine, I think it was, with regards to the as far away, um, comments, I think it probably needs to be retained as, as far away instead of setting a, um, specific setback distance. This just ensures that if there's any, um, issues that arise during the construction of the, uh, driveways with respect of how close the driveway can go to any of the boundaries, that sort of thing, it provides that flexibility there. Obviously, there's already protections in place through local laws, um, through the op works approval process, um, and then through these, these further conditions as well, which would be, um, o- obviously provides a high level of, um, restriction around protecting that tree.
Any further questions or comments in relation to James? Okay, thank you James for your presentation, thank you. Um, the next item is to reinstate standing orders. We need a motion that standing orders, best practice example, standing orders for local government and standing committee meetings, March two thousand twenty-four be reinstated. Uh, mayor and deputy mayor, all those in favour? Carrie, thank you. So, uh, the motion, uh, that will be, that is before us is that council approve application number R A L two O two four seven one three O for a development permit for reconfiguring a lot impact one lot into two lots pursuant to provisions of section sixty of the Planning Act two thousand sixteen and subject to the conditions listed in attachment three. Yes, deputy mayor?
Thanks Chair, through you. Um, a question about it's actually not the conditions listed in attachment three, um, that we have been discussing today, it is the amended conditions. So a question through you to the interim CEO, um, about the appropriate wording, thank you.
So councillors, you will see an amendment to the reference to now pick up the amended conditions. And attachment six was the one that you were just looking at on screen with the changes, so.
Thank you, so, thank you. Uh, everyone understand that? Yeah, thank you. Could me, could I have a move of that motion please? Uh, councillor Gardner, uh, councillor McMahon seconded. Uh, you wish to go into debate? If not, all those in favour? Against? Against, uh, councillor?
Chair, I wish to abstain. I'm happy to give reasons if required.
Okay, councillor, um, uh, Bill will abstain and councillor Carol, you're, you're? Voting for, okay, so. Well, just to, to make sure, uh, everyone, including myself, is in favour other than councillor Bill who is abstaining, is that, that's correct? Thank you.
Can do it again just?
Okay, to make sure of it, uh, I'll, uh, put that question again, all those in favour? Against? Abstain? Okay. Okay, that disposes of that item. The next item, uh, on the agenda, um, is, uh, with respect to an infrastructure charges discount request at thirteen to fifty-one Horrex Road, Ravensbourne. Uh, the, uh, author, uh, of that, uh, report that, uh, is, has been circulated, uh, is Josh Liddy? He was here, yep. Thanks man. Joining us as well as, uh, Josh is, uh, Adam Gould, who is the manager of the relevant department. So without any further ado, ask Josh to, uh, uh, give his presentation please.
Thank you, good afternoon councillors. Um, we have a report here, um, for a request for infrastructure charges reduction. Um, I'll take the report as read, but I'll also provide a bit of a brief overview for you. Um, so we have received several requests from the, the applicant, um, being in June last year and in January of this year. Uh, we've, uh, been dealing with this predominantly at an officer level, um, be- uh, because of the, and largely due to the non-compliance with the, uh, the policy, the district policy which I'll go into. Uh, this, this report has been requested by councillor Bornoff under those, um, under the policy, which one was. Um, but yeah, just a brief overview for you. Um, this was, uh, there was a development approval issued, it was a change approval issued on the third of September, um, of la- sorry, was it last year? Um, it was for a function facility, food and drink outlet and a short-term accommodation. So, um, the, an infrastructure charges notice was levied for the development on the third of, uh, sorry, twenty-third of September for twenty-nine thousand six hundred and forty-nine dollars and sixty-one cents. Uh, under our charges resolution, we do have an ability to index those charges in line with the PPI index. So, um, you know, if the applicant was to come in today to pay those charges, they would be thirty-four thousand seven hundred and thirty-four dollars. Um, this, I, I've reviewed this request against all the incentive policies, um, the current suite of incentive policies that we have in council. Um, I guess in, in short, there is no compliance with any of these policies. I guess the, the closest policy that could, um, be used here would be the district townships policy. Um, however, like I said, there is non-compliance with those policies and I guess the key points here is, uh, there are, this is not located in the mapped area. Under the district townships policy, uh, a function facility, um, and the chapel, which is part of the, the approval, is not identified as a business activity, which is what the, the policy intends for, uh, and the short-term accommodation, which is part of the approval, um, is, is not relevant as well because it is, um, not considered, uh, it's considered short-term, um, which the, and the policy intends for longer-term accommodation. Um, so on, on, on review of this request, uh, for the reduction of, of charges, there is no grounds under the policy to support this. And as a result, um, the, her, the, the recommendation here is for refusal, but the purpose of this report here is for consideration by the council. Um, and the only last thing I'll say is that, under the, the district township policy, there is an ability for council to buy re- um, to, to have discretion in the application of this policy.
Uh, uh, thank you, Josh. I, I omitted to, uh, remind, um, councillors that, uh, there was a declaration of declarable, declarable conflict of interest by councillor Vardhoff and, and, uh, the meeting resolved, uh, to proceed, uh, to allow her to participate and stay in the meeting and vote. Um, I think you, uh, would like to, uh, ask a question of Josh?
Yeah, well, thanks. Um, well, by way of explanation, I suppose Chair, um, thanks very much, um, Carrie and thank you Josh, uh, for this. I appreciate that the, um, request doesn't strictly meet the policy and so therefore officers can't approve, I appreciate that. And I also, um, am glad that under the policy councillors have discretion to consider, um, the, what we do here. So the mayor and I visited, um, site last year and, um, and at that time, um, construction was still happening. And there are a couple of things to consider here, but if we refer to policy two point three two, the temporary economic development incentives for district townships policy, there's two, two key, um, places that this doesn't strictly meet the policy. Um, the first is that, um, the policy stipulates, um, certain business activity and by definition a function centre doesn't meet that, um, definition of being a business activity. And the second is that the, the development approval has to be within the maps for the following areas and we've got everything from Yarim and Gambangi, Hampton, um, Top Camp, uh, Gary Mountain, Culpie, Hayden, Vale View and so on and so forth, but it doesn't mention Ravensbourne, so those are the two things. And I think that what I would like councillors to consider here, because we've got the discretion to do so, is despite it not, um, meeting strictly the definition of a business activity and despite Ravensbourne not being in that list, is it the intent of this policy to support these kind of developments? Um, there was a fund of three million dollars allocated to, um, policy two point three two. There's money available in the fund, two point two nine seven million dollars remains, so a considerable amount. And when the mayor and I were on site, um, the application, the applicants have had to upgrade the intersection, the major intersection, um, leading into the site. Now, that's come at considerable cost to them, somewhere in the order of a million dollars. And that is, um, not anything that council has control over, that's between the, um, that is between the applicants and the state government, but the report that's before us, um, talks about, there was an acceptance that, um, that, uh, that intersection needed to be upgraded. It's just unfortunately for the applicants, they have had to bear the cost of the entirety of upgrading that intersection. So, um, that's why we're here, I believe that it is within the intent of the policy and that there is, this is for economic development, it's an incentive for district townships and there would be a, a considerable economic contribution to our region by this, so that's why we're here to consider it, thank you.
I think I was first, anyway, I hadn't landed before, I'm sorry. Uh, Mr Chair, I just like, I'm, I'm, I'm really, whilst, whilst I take all those points on board, since I've been sitting here in this chair, there's, the, this policy has only been changed twice. Once for Airens, which is the largest employer in Gambangi, because it's not in the, in the area either, and once for Storey Farms, which is the largest lettuce farm in the southern hemisphere, both employing a lot of people, bringing a lot of economic benefit to the town. Um, I don't think, I think we can discount the T M Rs' conditions, it's nothing to do with us and whilst all these things are, are, are really great, it's not what the policy, when it was brought into account, was actually intended for. It was intended for real economic benefit to those townships and to bring them forward and, 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 and employ people, uh, and in doing so then, you know, be a driver for economic change for those areas. So I, I'm just personally, I'd have to be convinced because, um, uh, this would encourage, I believe we'd be setting a precedent and encourage anyone to build anything, anywhere and then ask for, for, um, um, a subsidy towards that. And I'm not, I haven't been out there, I'm not saying it's not a wonderful place, but I mean, we look at, um, at Barney Canel and, and places like that and they weren't, uh, they're very well operating and quite large, um, organisations, but they, they weren't uh, eligible for these types of things either. So they're the only two, uh, instances I can remember and both are huge drivers for their communities and for employment, um. And that's what I believe the incentive policy is for.
We're strictly at the stage of questions. Councillor Tim?
So I guess, Mr. Chair, my question would be, how could we justify this?
Okay.
I'm sorry. How could we justify this as opposed to somebody doing something out the back of Melmarin or somewhere else that, you know, is a really, it's a business decision at the end of the day?
I don't think the presenter will, is here to justify why not the opposite. But and the deputy mayor has probably covered those, answered your question really. Councillor Tim?
Chair, thank you. Look, I actually put my hand up to throw a similar spitball at the exact same target as councillor Von Hoff and see if I could get it to stick as well. And Josh, I'm so glad you're here, really. You and I had a lovely conversation in an open meeting no more than a month ago about the gasworks site. And we talked about that application didn't meet the specificities of the policy, but the strategic intent was there and I thought it would be a great precedent to set when something doesn't meet the detailed specifics of the policy, but the overall intent was there. There was a lovely line in that policy about councillor discretion, and I know it's a similar line here about councillor discretion. So I had the two, same two parts of this that I'd like to have a conversation with you about. Josh, number three in the policy, part three. And I think my comment in the open meeting around the gasworks site, well, sometimes when you create these policies and you try to list everything, we actually create more issues for ourselves because we don't account for the atypical one that we left out. And and when you've tried to mention every town in the region, perhaps could it be that we've tried to list all of the main ones and therefore actually made more work? Because it would fit in the strategic intent, but it's not in the overall list. Can I just have a comment on the places listed in part three of the policy? Are they there for a reason, Josh, or is it just trying to list everything? Sorry, it's not part three. I'm on the wrong one. It's down next page. There you go. Part three of number, whatever it is.
Through you. You've asked a little tricky question here, councillor, because Josh is not the author of the report.
Sorry.
And and I'm not sure who actually was, but, oh, sorry, the policy. So we've got a range of economic development policies, as you know, and I believe you also know that we're looking to review them. And part of that review will be to ensure that council are incentivising the types of development that we as a council want to see to grow and prosper and to encourage those developments within our area. It's it's a matter for councillors to decide if if this particular proposal in this particular location is one that you feel benefits that from the discretion of of council to make that decision. Now, you made reference to the gasworks, which I'm sure you'll appreciate is substantially larger development than this. And it did meet a lot of the, well, number one, it was in the locational area and it met a lot of the requirements. And the ones that it did not meet were more from a drafting error of our policies and the passage of time rather than non-compliance. So I don't believe as as planners here, we have any strong feelings either way, which is why we're, we've recommended a refusal because we don't have the delegation to decide otherwise under the policy, but council does. So we're handing it over to you.
No, thanks for that. I appreciate your answer. Can I just ask one more? And sorry that you're not the author, but I'm asking you because similar conversation we had in the ordinary meeting. The part about, I just had it. So page before, four point two of the policy. It's up one. Yeah, that one. So down the bottom of that page, one A talks about the business activities. So it's either a business activity or it's an essential service. And it talks about things like veterinary services as defined in the planning scheme. So the actual list of all of the possible inclusions, that's in the planning scheme, right? Do we have access to that? I couldn't see it in the notes.
We might get, we'll try and get access to that and bring it up on the screen. Maybe we could progress to another question while we're doing that.
Look, they're my two main questions, Chair, but at the appropriate time, I appreciate. There are more questions, Chair. If I could at the appropriate time propose an alternate amendment to this and for my council office colleagues, that may include approving it for the district township and the food and drink. But I agree with you, the cabinet's part is, so it's for the first half, but not the second half. So I'll word Smith and I know there may be some more questions. Thank you, Chair.
Councillor James?
Thanks. Thanks, Chair. Seems to be a lot of spitballs being thrown in the same direction here. So most of my questions have been answered. So the only query I had is, are a submitter or an applicant speaking?
Yeah, it's a matter for councillors to hear them. So, yeah, if nobody objects to, yeah, yep, by all means.
Chair, could you give, given some questions that have been asked, Chair, it might be useful. Given some questions that have been asked, it might be useful, but we may have to go.
Suspend standing orders.
Suspend standing orders before you do that. So just a procedural matter. Councillor James might have another question separate to that.
Do you want to deal with that earlier question? Because the information is now up. No? Okay, well, if I could have a motion that standing orders be suspended or suspend to allow us to hear the applicant. The mayor moves, councillor Trevor, seconders, all those in favour, against? Carry. Thank you. I don't have your name. Sorry. Would you like to come up if you wish?
Good afternoon, Mayor McDonald and councillors. Thank you for your time this afternoon. And so in this instance, we're obviously, we're involved with Emily and Stuart Valdahl in the preparation and processing of the original development application. And we've also put through, through Adam and Josh's team, a request for this matter to come to you today. I think I can cover off on a few of the questions that have been asked. Before I do, I think there's, we appreciate this is a completely discretionary request. At the outset, we know we don't fit neatly into the policy framework that council has produced to date. And perhaps on face value, it seems that the the request that's been asked in terms of the financial value is low. But I think I can just give some background as to why any relief from council at the moment is important for this project. And I think preempting some of the questions of precedence, we can also demonstrate this context here, which means this doesn't result in you getting continual requests for infrastructure charges. I appreciate on face value, you would think that every applicant will want to have their infrastructure charges waived, and that is true. But the reality here, there are circumstances and there's merit to the to the request that we'd like to run you through. And it's covered in three things. It's the works, the project that's actually been proposed and the policy framework that you have. So in relation to the works, I think giving some context here, it's, the proposal is a function facility that will have up to two hundred guests, that has been proposed by a local family, local builder, and will be run by a local business. So in relation to the works that have been conditioned by DTMR, those works originally, pardon me, through the assessment of the original application, it was shown and TMR agree, those works are required now. They're not brought on by the Valdales proposal. They are required. And that, those works are a basic left-hand treatment at the highway into the side street to council side street and a basic right turn movement. So those works are required irrespective of what this proposal is. And the reality is they're not there because TMR haven't been able to keep up their upgrade programme through that road. So had it been properly funded, we wouldn't be here. The Valdales would be able to just proceed and construct this project. In the passing of time, since this was done and recognising there was needed to go through a quarter pill process, and as many councillors are aware, the cost of those external road upgrades, to which funding can't be provided because it's not an asset that can be secured, it's a public thing, that that cost has gone from five hundred thousand dollars to around one point two to one point five million dollars in that period of time. So there's been a significant cost escalation. And I don't think the comment that it's just a TMR issue and not our issue is true. I mean, the fact that there is a safety upgrade occurring here has benefit to Tumba residents too. It's not that there are just people that travel along the state controlled road and never exit to a Tumba Regional Council road. Tumba residents get a benefit from this, as do visitors to the area, who will now be able to turn safely right or turn safely left and travel down a council network as well. I think also to add further context is whilst it might be a TMR controlled road and the works are occurring on a TMR, or sorry, the works have been approved by TMR, for the installation of signage on Philp Street, council is still imposing around thirty thousand dollars of temporary road closure charges through the project as part of the temporary road closure permit for the safety sign that has to sit on Philp Street. So I think in terms of the works, they're substantial, the quantum is significant, and this is a local business that's delivering an asset that will benefit the quarry that's at the end of the street, a large national that doesn't, that will benefit from this up safety upgrade, as will residents within the surrounding area. The project, as I mentioned, local builder, local company, with local people getting employed. I don't, I don't think the policy speaks to just requiring a large multinational business or a large farming business to get the benefit of this policy. In fact, I would have thought it's even best placed when it's targeted and a business that will employ between twenty and fifty people and a lot of those will be in hospitality, casual positions that are coming from the local area. In relation to the policy itself, we recognise it's not a neat fit. But I think if we go back to the policy intent here, I don't think that the exclusion of Ravensbourne is intentional. And the intent here is to ensure that local businesses can get a start in rural areas. And that's exactly what is occurring here. So we are having a local business establish a new local venue that will be, now, based on the things that Stu and Em have produced across this city previously, will be exemplary and will be an attraction to the, for the whole of the, for the whole of the region. And it's within a rural area. So I think at a high level, notwithstanding that we don't meet some of those require, the specific requirements, we clearly meet a policy intent and there's funds available. And it's not a significant amount of money. We're simply seeking any form of the relief so that we're able to bring on the last few months of this construction project, which has been a pretty significant journey for Em and Stu over the last three years. So happy to take any, any questions.
Any questions? Councillor Trevor?
May not be for James to start with, but the total amount that we're asking for and then the amount that James and crew are asking for, what was that and what was that? It may be written somewhere.
Inflationary costs have been added to it and I believe it's in the order of thirty four, thirty five thousand dollars. The infrastructure charge relates only to the transport network, one network as opposed to the five that if it was in an urban area.
Okay. So the amount we're looking for with this, if it's approved, is thirty four thousand?
That would be the full amount. In the report, Josh has provided various options if council would like to look at the full amount or partial amounts.
Okay. So what would the full amount be? Thirty four. And the partial amount is? Stage one or two. Yeah. Sorry for this because we've got to, we probably have people online looking and whatever else.
Deanne, maybe you could put that section of the report up on the screen that talks about the different options. There's a table with some.
And the amount that we've got sitting in that fund for the whole of the region, that's available?
Yes, more than enough to cover it, councillor Manthail.
Cover it. And James, thank you for touching on my point. My question was going to be the employment number and you've mentioned twenty to fifty people.
Yeah, twenty to forty people. So initially the twenty people and then ideally over time is.
It will build up.
It'll build up to.
Thank you for that.
Councillor Gary?
I'm, you know, for waiving the whole thing. I think he's been penalised enough by having to do the intersection. As a developer myself, I get hit that all the time where you're doing work for everyone else to use and I feel sorry for him. And I think, you know, he's paid enough.
James, thanks for, it's James, right?
Yes.
Yes. Last guy was James too.
It's confusing. There was a James here too.
James, yeah, all James. What are you, what, what, like, we've got a policy, doesn't fit it, there is discretion, but we've got to have our facts down. So what are you after?
Well, initially and probably predating this request, we'd also asked whether there was consideration greater than thirty five thousand dollars. And that initial response, given that it's not a trunk road, was that that wasn't possible. So we've gone for the thirty five thousand dollars. Obviously, given the escalation that's occurred during that period of time, it doesn't cover, the reality is that it'll cover nearly council's application fee or permit fee to put a safety sign on the road. So if there's more funds available, we'd certainly be all arms. But what we proposed is the ICN to be waived in its full at the moment. It's about thirty four thousand.
Twenty thousand, one hundred and forty three and forty nine cents plus fourteen thousand, five hundred and ninety plus eighty six cents. Is that correct?
Thirty four, six or something.
Councillor, the the ICN as it currently exists was issued in twenty twenty one, I believe. And since then, we've applied index indexing to it. So if it was to be paid this financially, or I believe the amount is thirty four thousand. And Deanne, if you scroll up a little bit, I believe those figures are somewhere in this report.
Yeah, thank you, Chair. I'd like to move that council approve the request to discount and approve in full for the amount of thirty four thousand.
Excuse me, Bec. We have to, we have to go out of standing orders.
We've got to get out of standing orders.
Any further questions or any further questions at this stage? If not, move, ask for somebody to move, councillor to move that we reinstate standing orders. Mayor and seconder James, councillor James, all those in favour? Carry unanimously. Deputy Mayor?
Yeah, thanks, Chair. I'd say it again. I'd like to move that council approve the request to discount the infrastructure charges notice, so on and so forth, in full for the amount of thirty four thousand, seven hundred and thirty four dollars and thirty five cents.
Is there a second to that motion? Councillor Gary? Any? Sorry.
And the reason being that it is in keeping, doing so is in keeping with the intent of council's temporary economic development incentives for district townships policy two point three two.
Just ask the interim CEO to comment.
Just given the nature of escalation occurring with the passage of time and for completeness, rather than naming the dollar value, if we just refer to discounting it in full or waiving in full, rather than naming the dollar value in case we end up with two dollars fifty or something.
You're happy with that, Deputy Mayor? And the seconder, who was? Councillor Gary, happy with that? Do we need to go into debate? If not, I'll put the, put that motion, all those in favour? Against? Councillor Carroll, councillor Bill abstaining?
Yeah, I'm abstaining for a particular reason.
Division is required due to the declarable declaration by the deputy mayor before. So I don't have to name them. You've got it noted? So division will be noted accordingly. Thank you.
So Chair, did you give my abstain?
Yes, I indicated that. Yep. Okay. I think. That really does conclude the business before us today. Thank you for your attendance, one and all.